Trustee Hallwax, trustee listener, trustee Mulvaney, trustee Underdon, trustee Rubin, trustee Reed, president Rowan.
We are not live streaming this meeting tonight. We're video recording it to make it available on the village's YouTube channel. Next item on the agenda is public comments. This portion of the meeting allows for those in attendance to address the board regarding non-agenda items. I'll ask for public comments on agenda items to be made at the time you reset item agenda. All comments are going to be limited to three minutes and I'll notify the speaker when the time is up. Are there any public comments? Heck, we don't even have regular civilians from the public. Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion of development of the State of the Village Report in preparation for the village board strategic planning. Now I'll ask the village manager and the assistant village manager, assistant to the village manager two percent.
Thank you. President Rowan, board of trustees, appreciate it. So I hope you've had a chance to review the brief memo we put together in the packet or even the 2017 State of the Village Report. But that's where we're going to start with the review of tonight. As we look toward the strategic planning process, the State of the Village is really in the first step of that. The current State of the Village, sorry, the current strategic plan is the village's second and it was developed starting in 2017 and was originally intended to run 2019 through 2021. The plan's been extended twice and now runs through the end of 2023. The plan's to facilitate a new one in the first quarter of 2024. A few factors that kind of support to this timeframe that we're on right now. The past plan accounted for many different variables, many challenges, many threats, but not the pandemic. That's a major reason why it's been extended twice and now runs through the end of 2023. And then as we started to approach that timeframe based on the village board election cycle, the onboarding of two new trustees, the onboarding of two new department heads as we approach, you know, that timeframe of public safety and public works, as well as the timing of the comprehensive plan, which will be a major component that goes into this, and the 2023 community survey, which, as you know, is just wrapped up and are getting ready to report on to, kind of brings us to this 2024 timeframe. So as we look toward it, one of the first documents that we'll start to work to put together as a staff to help support that strategic visioning process that will lead to the strategic plan is the State of the Village Report. It's an environmental scan of internal and external indicators that helps to support some of the knowledge to make decisions in the strategic visioning process. Village manager Corral, you'll talk just a little bit about what we use the 2017 report for.
Some of you on the board were part of that process to create what became a really extensive document. And John will walk you through in a few minutes the component parts of it. But really, the idea behind the State of the Village Report was to level the playing field for the elected officials and the staff going into that strategic planning process. And by that, I mean just really kind of unifying a sense of the issues in the community, a sense of the priorities for the community as we built out that strategic plan. Again, John's going to walk you through those component parts. But what it really also helped to do was to narrow down some of the prioritization and how we could better focus our efforts and time in that strategic planning process. We really affirmed the strategic priorities that had been set in the first strategic plan back in 2014 and built out four goal set areas. I think as we look back on that strategic plan, had the pandemic not happened, we probably would have seen some of the plan really not take shape, even though the pandemic wouldn't have happened. I think we also would have seen some of the component parts of that strategic plan take shape differently. And, you know, as we, as we prepped for 2024 and looking to that, we want to again create this document that can help to put everybody on the, generally the same page, at least from the standpoint of a knowledge base. And as John said, what's interesting about this particular one versus the last is how much new input we're going to be able to utilize as part of that. We now have three community surveys that have been done. When we did this the last time, we only had one. And the information that will carry through from one throughout the 2023 survey will help, I think, as one factor in hoping to put together a solid sense of what direction we want to go. So John's going to walk through a couple of things, but really tonight is an opportunity as we have a couple of outgoing trustees and a couple of incoming trustees, a chance to really think about how to frame the document for this next, this next round. So I'll turn it back over to John.
Yeah, as the discussion turns back to you guys, it's going to be elements from the 2017 State of the Village that definitely makes sense to include in the 2023. Maybe what makes, you know, makes sense to delete, remove, not include again, or, you know, what makes sense to add to that. The 2017 plan, in case you're not committed to heart, you know, the 60-page report, it really falls into three different elements. It's got an introduction section, external indicators, and internal indicators. In the introduction, there's an executive summary and a preface that just kind of sets the page for, or sets the tone for the 60-page document, which is dense. It's a lot of data-driven information. The executive summary, I think, tends to be some of the more helpful points. It's bullet pointed information pulled out from the rest of the report. In the external indicators, there's a lot of metrics from Glencoe, but also the region and the state that highlights trends and shifts in demographics, housing and real estate, transportation, tourism, local business information, and, you know, crime type data as well. Much of that comes from the 2010 census. Some of it comes from the 2015 American Community Survey, which is sort of an intermittent census document that helps to provide some of those data points in off census years. 2023, we're much closer to the 2020 census than they were in 2017 to the 2010 census. The internal indicators includes data that illustrates resident satisfaction, again, from the village survey, trends in village personnel and staffing costs, financial forecasts, communications information, provides a list of currently known non-home rule impacts. That was a conversation the board was having at that time. And then shared service and joint purchasing opportunities, as well as capital needs in the village's technology plan. So again, all of the internal village stuff, if you will, as it, you know, points to those. As we start to think about how some of these might update for 2023, again, we're thinking, one, about what input we'd need on data points, but also what data's available to us. Just to kind of, I wanted to give some highlights of some of the things that we've already started to look at off the 2020 census, as well as the 2022 CMAP community snapshot, which is a document that CMAP puts together. And a lot of that information is based off the 2020 census as well. So demographic information, obviously, a lot of this is most accurate in the census years. The American Community Survey, their five-year estimates aren't just that, they're estimates. But we do have the 2020 numbers that give us a lot to run off of. Again, just a couple of population trends, general things, being able to kind of have some of those cornerstone, you know, 10-year decade snapshots is helpful for these types of planning exercises. One thing, another population snapshot, just to share. One thing, just to kind of start to paint the picture of how some of that information's helpful. This is the CMAP 2022 report that they put out. There's a lot of data that was included for the first time in that 2022 report. While a lot of that drives off the 2020 census, they also include data that was collected in 2021 by them. It's helpful because it starts to at least get a glimpse of some of the COVID impacts. I included this one in here because it's the first time in, you know, a very long stretch, over 100 years of those reports, that they included new data such as work at home, you know, as part of this kind of picture. So they're starting to bring in some of that new information and those are new things that we can consider. Same thing in the community survey reports. As we start to see some of those results, we're seeing some of those COVID impact change happen here, start to emerge. Obviously, some of this data lags behind as it's collected and reported and some of those things take time. But we do start to have some of that glimpse data-wise into this pandemic's, you know, output into the community. As Phil mentioned, it's important to remember that some of these resources will come from other documents. As we move into Q1 2024 with the strategic visioning exercises, by that time, we'll have the community survey, that report will come to you the next couple of months here, kind of in-depth, as Phil mentioned. 2017 has a lot of community survey data in it, but it's just the one 2015 report. It's not really able to compare and contrast against the other years. Now we have that 2015, 2019, 2023 kind of buildup, includes almost all of the same questions. Obviously, some small additions, but things that we can really compare against. And then as well, the comprehensive plan, you know, by late this year, we'll start to be, you know, able to look at drafts of that and hopefully complete that process in early 2024. So as we start to look at those pieces, although we can include some of those elements from these other resource documents in the State of the Village, we're also not going to re, you know, re-duplicate everything in the State of the Village Report that comes from some of these other resource documents. Again, as we kind of turn the page on, on some of these pieces, we just will kind of start thinking about what elements you guys think are important. We can flip back to those and then, you know, village manager probably will help us kind of work through some discussion questions.
So really, taking tonight as an opportunity, we, as John, and John's been fronting a lot of the introductory work on this project. It's a big project and it's a project that could include everything or it's a project that could be narrowed somewhat to be inclusive of information that's going to be beneficial to all of you as you're working to contemplate what the strategic vision is going to be for the village with this new strategic plan. The opportunity tonight, again, as Pete and Jonathan cycle off the board for them to perhaps share any insights on that the new board will be able to continue to maintain focus on or begin to focus on is one thing, but it's really an opportunity really to just dialogue about, with these questions perhaps in mind, there's no right answer to any of these, whether these are the right questions. These are just prompting questions that, that we've been working through. But it's a bit of a note-taking session for the staff as we build out this, this report. The last one, as John said, was extensive, possibly too extensive. There's a value to having a digestible document that all of you can take time to understand, but, but not have to commit, you know, weeks to, to reading and digesting. I'd like to see it be a bit more streamlined document, not 60 to, 60 to 70 pages long. Again, as John said, given the fact that we will have a lot of new data available to us. It doesn't necessarily have to be repeated in this, in this, but tonight is pre-form discussion. We don't have answers to these questions. We're hoping that you have at least some thoughts, but no one's committing to anything either. But it's a, it's a sense for us to be able to begin to formulate what this final report will look like that we're going to share with you late this year. So with that, that's our presentation for the, for the, for the moment. And happy to help facilitate some of this discussion with you tonight.
What do you want to say about water? Which is, you know, sort of in the scheme of what's the potential looming disaster? Because it's so expensive. What, so what do you want to say about?
No, in terms of water mains, you're talking about in terms of like?
I'm talking about water plants. And we just did the water main thing, which maybe allows this happy crew to punt to the, you know, entirely new group to figure it out. But if we sort of look down the pike, and, and this is going to be trivial to say, but that, what I just said, that water is the big looming thing, that was true when Scott Felton was president. It's been, maybe before Scott Felton was president, but it's still there and it's not actually going away. And I, if I had, I don't know what the answer is, but if I had my druthers, I would not want when this happens for the board at the time to say, if only those clowns in 2023 and 2024 and 2025 had started doing the right thing, we would not be in this shape.
I would tell, I would say that I think in the next five years, a significant decision will likely need to be made. And opportunities will continue to present themselves in terms of community partnerships. This is not a problem that is simply Glencoe's. Many of our neighboring communities are living with plants that are of a similar vintage, facing the same EPA requirements that we are. Our plant is very well maintained, but if the EPA adjusts things significantly, there's going to be a window for those adjustments. It's not going to be an immediate change, which is good, that gives us additional time to plan. But I do think we're nearing a point, you know, the plant will be 100 years old five years from now. We're nearing a point where the deferral of a discussion, at least about those options, will probably begin to be a negative in terms of the, the overall decision-making process. We're finalizing a report that was, that, that was delayed fairly significantly thanks to the pandemic on opportunities to work with our neighbor to the south, One Etka, on water. There remain other options that are available to us that I think we'll still need to evaluate. Looking back at the 2014 and 15 plans that were completed, updating the water distribution system, plan to make sure that we have sufficient resources to continue to invest in the distribution system in addition to coming up with a solution. And I'll say, any solution that we come to is a long-duration decision. We won't make a call in 2024 and start construction in 2025. We will probably make a call at some point and start construction a decade later. These are processes that take a great deal of time, particularly if we look at partnership opportunities. So I would say it remains a very high priority. I know it remains a high, very high priority for the staff. And it's an expensive priority. There's no two ways around that. It's a very expensive, it was, it's always been a very expensive priority to contemplate, particularly the reconstruction of a plant or a significant renovation of a plant. Tens of millions of dollars, likely the most expensive capital project the village will undertake or has to date undertaken. But that, we know, is going to be a significant focus of the staff. So I would, I would say to you, President Rowan, it will be and should be a component of this report in terms of perhaps a facility, a reminder of the work that's been done to date, a reminder of the options that are available. And, you know, the strategic plan will likely have some goal sets built in there around, as the current one does, around making some decisions on that next, within the window of the life of that strategic plan.
We could ignore it and we would semi-beat the rap. This is a, there'll be a historical judgment later, you know, if we're doing our jobs and we should try to do our best to figure out what's the smart thing to do and start in that direction. And by the way, to me, because it's hopelessly expensive, our best hope is some combination of working with our neighbors, which would not be easy, and finding, you know, somebody else to pay for a bunch of it, which also won't be easy. But those are both possible if we lay the groundwork, but really hard.
Well, and I will say, you know, I think a lot of the discussion that took place in 2011 and 12 and 13 with the Northwest Water Commission, the, part of the reason those discussions took place was that they approached the village with an interest in seeking access to Lake Michigan. Those access points for not just the Northwest Water Commission, but a myriad of other inland communities that have either a water consortium, joint water agencies, or are currently customers of the city of Chicago, are still out there. There still is that opportunity for Glencoe to contemplate working with a number of those groups to see if those options might be two better options for us in terms of reduction of cost to the community. So I, I would say those options remain viable and should be part of our decision-making process. And considering those options would be very important to do what you mentioned, which is to find a path forward. I think it would be very difficult for the village to assume the full cost of a, of a water plant replacement on its own. We have debt limitations in the first place. And, you know, we're, we're seeing numbers probably approaching 75 million to replace what we have. So that's a big number and it's a big number when you tie it in also with the remainder of the CIP. I would say that what we know remains our biggest priority is continued thoughtful investment in our infrastructure, evolving that process to make sure that our infrastructure is being appropriately sized and designed to accommodate what is changing from a climate standpoint, to make sure that, that, that we are greening that infrastructure, we are best practice development, we are in best practice development on that infrastructure replacement so that those investments are long-term, they're not short-term. And that we're doing a good job of maintaining the physical space that we occupy, the natural space that we occupy. Our ravine system, our outfalls into Lake Michigan, the Skokie Lagoons, the things that keep this community dry when storms come through on what seem to be increasing pace, at least in terms of duration, intensity and frequency. So how are we doing all that we need to do to make sure that our infrastructure investments are managing those, those things well? So those are, those are conversations that we're having internally with Public Works and, and working to find a means of continuing to invest appropriately wherever possible with outside resources. I think the project that we're working on with Park District right now that is going to hopefully alleviate several concerns about the movement of the bluff at Lakefront Park is a great example of the kind of projects that we're going to need to continue to focus on and the partnerships that we're going to need to facilitate and to really work to maintain so that we can work together and get those dollars. Because that's part of the reason those $700,000 came from the state was this joint project between the village and the park district.
I can say, so very different. As a piece of, yeah. So, you know, when we talked the last time, we talked, we talked a lot about trying to bring business into Glencoe to diversify our revenue streams, to have a broader tax base. And I think that's happened. I think there was sort of that welcome to Glencoe committee that was started several years ago. I think we should make sure that that continues. I'm not sure we haven't talked about that in a while, but I'm assuming it still exists. But, and, and see if there are other things that we can do to further enhance downtown. I think the pandemic changed a lot, but it also showed how much people appreciate the vibe of downtown. And to make sure that we do everything we can to see that it stays that way. And, you know, we, when we, when I also first started, we started, we talked about leveraging writers. And so continuing to do that, but then also thinking about everything else that's in town, including potentially underused space, possibly public works, and just other areas that, you know, we can further improve or use so that Glencoe just continues to be a really fun place to be when you're downtown.
Will we write? Can I throw out one, something that might be related to that? Back to government. Like, should we be talking about home rule as something that would help us? When I interviewed for the job I currently have, I was asked how did I feel about home rule? And I said, I was in favor of it 35 years ago and I still am. But there was a referendum back in the day which lost miserably. But we should think of it, we shouldn't do it if it's not going to help. I mean, we're, it's a lovely village now without it. But my impression is it probably would help. There's some of the other things we would do maybe to enable us to get more revenue streams compared to our private.
I would say one thing just to, to that point, you know, if there was, if there's been a, an aspect of the current strategic plan that received a ton of staff time and board time, it's that subject. And it's funny because we nearly got to a point of making a decision on whether or not to seek a referendum question. Our last discussion of it, I believe, was in January of 2020 and some things changed a month or so later. And a lot of that work has been done. I think it all needs to be updated. I think it all needs to be contemplated in perhaps the new reality that we've found ourselves in. And I would say that the answer to the question probably will come from a further discussion that will be aided by adding information from where we were in January of 2020. So I would, I would say that that's an area also that staff would want to finalize the research so that the board can, can feel as though it has the information it needs to make a decision about how to move forward or if to move forward.
What other advice from us do you want? I mean, you guys have been thinking about this, you have. And so what advice do you think you could have from us?
As just kind of a thought-provoking idea, here's, there's a couple other ideas that we've talked about adding into reports as we approach that, that would be helpful to get your feedback. Things that were not included in the 2017 report, at least not in any detail, that perhaps we could go further on. So we're just kind of working through them, you know, conversations about diversity, equity, inclusion. Again, land use wasn't contemplated, things like downtown are a big part of that. Though also recognizing that the comprehensive plan will fill some of that gap. Again, big challenges that we faced since that time are, you know, our limitations in manpower and supply. There's a lot that's been changing in the landscape of law enforcement since then. Dedicating more significant time to the work that all of the boards and commissions are doing. And as we approach the strategic plan, is there a new path that the board wants to set any of those interests on? You know, and then obviously the clubhouse is also something that'll be high-profile as we approach the 2024 timeframe.
One of the things, just to refresh, refresh your memories, the current strategic plan has four goal set areas. One of those four is staffing. Because in 2017, when we were putting things together, we were anticipating significant turnover. We realized it and then some. And I will say, I think the vision set forth in that strategic plan led us down a path to amend policies and to amend structures in terms of how we serve as an employer that have helped us to attract people when other municipalities have struggled to do so. I would underscore the fact that we think that the turnover environment isn't really going to change. The long-term municipal employee may be a thing of the past, even in areas like public safety, where traditionally you started a career and you ended a career in the same municipality. But even since 2017, we have implemented policies that allow us to hire people into the public safety department who are mid-career. They're not entry level, they're lateral transfer. They're not entry level, they're lateral transfers from other departments. And the environment has shifted. And so we've seen employees leave to go to other departments. We've seen employees come to us from other departments. Those, that dynamic isn't really what we thought it would be in twenty seventeen. And as we said, when we were building out the last strategic plan, you know, eighty percent of what we spend on an annual basis in terms of the general fund are people. And how do we make sure we are achieving a return on that investment for the community? So that what, the, the work that is getting done is improving the quality of life here. That's gonna continue to be a question that deserves time and discussion. And there's no one right answer and there's no silver bullet to it either. But it's, I think, that that's an area where we know, perhaps what we assumed even in twenty seventeen isn't really the assumption any longer.
So to get back to your question, President Rowan, I mean, some of these ideas, it'd be helpful to know from the nine of you, yea, nay, these are things that we're interested or not interested in, in kind of stepping further into. Because those are the things that we'll prioritize in terms of preparing, you know, some more information on that help that strategic visioning process. But also any other, you know, these are pretty big buckets. If there's things under these, these topics that, you know, is what you have in mind, voicing those things will help focus our, our piece of, so.
What about the ten cards?
It's an open question still. And a good one. Annexation of the Titanic, sorry.
Possible annexation, yeah.
You know, when you, you think about the topic you mentioned in terms of the organizational structure and people that we have, what we're likely to face going forward. What, not just from the, everybody knows we've gotta keep focusing on tech from a pure defensive point of view. I don't mean to, yes, that's gotta be part of whatever plan, but I don't know how much, how much time we spend on a real strategic plan. Cause it's just every minute of every day, you gotta think about how they're trying to screw with you and messing up your fleet's cars or your water system or whatever. But also what can it do for us? In terms of helping us with our organizations or how might it change how our organization should be shaped or structured going forward? And how might it even make it more attractive to continue to, or to be attracted to come work here? Because of the technology you get to use and therefore what we are having people do, spending their time on the things they, you know, that they might enjoy more in life, et cetera, versus some of the things we can have tech do for you. It's just a rapidly evolving topic, obviously, for any, every industry, every profession.
D I M was a big investment that we made, it was part of the strategic plan in the past. And one of the suggestions I have is that we pull this plan out much more frequently and hold ourselves accountable to it. I would suggest we don't have a paper copy, but something that's posted online once or twice or three or four times a year. Comes to the board meeting on the agenda and we rank ourselves and staff holds us accountable for helping meet those goals. Plot that and I would have that public, all for transparency and to make sure that we're working towards established goals. Of course, changes all. One of the things that was on the old plan was the notion of housing, which I think we did not do nearly enough since that plan was created. The idea was to keep Glencoe a multi-generational community. And I think since that time, you've seen the fastest reduction in a single-family in, or starter homes and empty nester homes in the history of Glencoe, as I understand it. So we have been losing ground a big way with respect to allowing Glencoe or enabling Glencoe to be a multi-generational community, which is, in my opinion, one of the core things which makes Glencoe great. So if we are not careful, I really do think that we can take our eye off the ball and we will soon be a community that can be moving in and out as opposed to staying for such generations. I would keep that on the plan if you have that opportunity to do so and focus. It's a really tough thing to, to govern. That's something I, I would suggest.
Glenn, I'm hard to disagree with any of that. Let, let me know if it's when, there aren't a lot of opportunities for us to change the housing stock in this place, there are a lot of opportunities. It turned out the village got one little tiny thing. It was whether we changed the zoning on Green Bay Road to allow multifamily housing. And all hell broke loose. I mean, all hell broke loose. People went nuts about how it was gonna destroy the place they were living. And went to the zoning board and the zoning board said, with all of the hullabaloo against it, okay, we're not, we're not changing it. One of the, at the time, you know, I was sort of in favor of it. It didn't get to the village board, but I was sort of in favor of it. And the old village board, before I got there, was sort of in favor of it. And I sent it to the zoning board, look at it. And one of the things I, at the time, I looked to see whether there was something in the various planning documents that would support doing this. And it was really soft. So one of the things, if, if we think as Trustee Mulvaney says, that we wanna have as many opportunities as we can have for multi-generational, for, for, you know, not just four million dollar homes. If we think that's a good idea, let's put it in our documents so that when we, the question comes up, we have something to point to. Cause it was, it was probably, it was, you know, it was in the ethers maybe, but it was not really there to point to.
Comprehensive plan in the discussions we've, maybe Gil, you can speak to that. We talked about developing sub-area plans to identify some of this in Glencoe that we would be able to change the zoning. And be able to build different types of structures and uses.
Look, in the real world that we live in, if anybody proposes doing this, the next door neighbor is not gonna be enthusiastic. They're just not. And, and, and you, I, and you, I try to put myself, okay, if I were the next door neighbor, I, you know, same way and we, so I have to deal with that. And to Pete's point, if we wanna accomplish this, we need to lay the groundwork. We need, you know, here's why, here's why this is okay. In general, we try to make everybody happy all the time. And we fail with that because they're, you know, they're competing interest, but that's what we think. This is one where if we, if we want it, we're gonna really have to lay the ground.
What I'm wondering is how this plan then interfaces with the comprehensive plan. So many of these topics, I'm going down the checklist, right? We've considered that, we're talking about that, we're talking about that. So, so how do you see these two? Do you see them parallel? Do you see them kind of meshing together? Is there being done currently?
They should, they, well, and so they're different plans, right? So comprehensive plan is a long range, which is twenty-plus years. Strategic plan should be short-term visioning, so three to five. A little behind on that. I would say part, another part of the reason why this delay is taking place in terms of, of a revamp on the strategic plan is to wait for the comprehensive plan to get closer to being finalized, if not completely finalized, so that the strategic plan supports the kind of broader community visions that the comprehensive plan is gonna lay out there. That then gives the strategic plan the opportunity to be kind of the building blocks toward achieving whatever those community-wide goals are. Not with the expectation that we're gonna get everything done in three or five years, but that we're building those foundations to get to the, whatever the next level is gonna be. So they should very much be meshed together. There should be a, they shouldn't, they certainly shouldn't be in conflict with one another, right? And so I think that's, that is a good reason to do this process. Once we're most of the way there, if not all the way there with the comprehensive plan, so that they do talk with one another.
Right, cause otherwise the time, the timing was just concerning me.
Yes.
You know, the comprehensive plan, we have goals and, you know, so we're going through the same steps, so many of these issues that we've talked about are similar. Obviously, comprehensive plan isn't focusing on things like water, which they need to be in. We've, we've talked about, you know, infrastructure and things like that. But I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't this redundancy that, you know, you've got two, two groups doing a lot of the same things concurrently, so.
Yeah, and the, and the strategic plan will pull some goals likely out of the comprehensive plan that are the first to attack kind of in that stretch. The State of the Village kind of goes a different direction to do more of an environmental documentation of where things are today on a lot of these items. And so things like, you know, these data sets of where things are today kind of help to draw that baseline as you go into the strategic plan. But also could help kind of formulate something that needs attention as we look forward. You know, things like census or community survey results that, you know, the village board highlights as things that need attention could drive a strategic plan goal.
Right, cause we were also looking at a lot of those same, you know, data points. But, so your timing is a little bit behind the comprehensive plan. So you're looking for some of that before you really do dive?
Well, I think some of it is gonna be done, the deep diving is gonna be done by the comprehensive planning process, so we won't be redundant in that way. I think the comprehensive plan at its core is a land use plan too, right? So that's great, that's a very important part of the vision for the community into the future, but not everything is land use driven. So, you know, what are the areas that aren't land use driven? What are the, the governance structures? What are the, the other components? Some of it is, you know, probably gonna dally into zoning. But again, my hope is that it's, whatever the strategic plan ultimately is, and whatever the comprehensive, comprehensive plan ultimately is, those two are working in concert with one another. The State of the Village is really, it's an important document, but it's not a policy-setting document. It's an information-sharing document. So it's something that we will pull from the work that the Plan Commission is doing. We will pull from the data that we have access to census and otherwise. The, the community survey is a great example. A lot of things in the community survey that have nothing to do with the comprehensive plan, but they're still important. So I think as we get them, we're, you know, we're, we're gonna present that back to the board this summer. And there's some interesting information in there that I think is gonna be helpful for the Plan Commission too. And that will dump into this, into this document as well.
I know nobody has forgotten that there is also a sustainability plan that has been, being developed and ready for submission very soon.
Yeah, I think so.
So I know that there was a focus on the comprehensive and the strategic, but actually.
And I think Trustee Mulvaney brings up a really good point and it's one of the reasons we included, you know, should there be a better accounting between the village board and its boards and commissions on what work is happening? Because the Council for Inclusion is working on things. His Sustainability Task Force is working on things. Others, our Preservation Commission is working on, and all of these are, all of these should be complementary initiatives that are seeking to achieve the same thing, albeit perhaps by a different route. And they shouldn't conflict with one another. And I think that's one area where the staff sees there's, there's a lot of time going into these efforts. And is the village board confident or comfortable in the direction that those efforts are moving? How can we do a better job of, of integrating those dialogues and those discussions? Do we have to structure that out a little bit differently? That's not really a strategic plan. It could be an outcome of a strategic plan, but it is really about a communication discussion. And how does the board and its advisory commissions dialogue with one another? So that everybody feels as though the, the direction that those, and it's a lot of good work that's happening, but that it's being supported both directions. And the board is being supported by the work being done and the board supports the work being done.
That was one of the initiatives on the prior strategic plan was improving our collaboration with other governancees.
Yes, with other governing bodies.
Not just village committees, but the library and school, et cetera. And again, I think that has improved over the past few years. Some good examples of contract sharing even with other communities. And we were on a path of more collaboration. We had some board member meetings across the different governancees. We would meet in the library or the French garden, the French.
Yeah, during the French, the French markets.
Right, so we were doing things.
Yeah, coffee with the boards, I think, is what you were.
The board, the coffee shop, yeah. We were doing things, COVID interrupted that. And, and I don't, I don't feel like we've done much to get back on that. And again, I keep saying this very intentionally, I think we're doing this, I think we're doing that. My point, my earlier point is we, we really should be documenting and supporting, are we really making progress towards these goals? Right now, after eight years on the board, I have no idea if we've moved the needle because we haven't tracked it, we haven't come to a consensus that we are doing well on this item or not. So we don't really have a body of work to look back on and say, we did great here, did okay here, and we really need to improve this. So I hope that is a part of the going forwards. That won't be a combo, you guys will. And I think that's really important. Because sitting here now, looking back, you go, all right, sure, we did great. I can say so, but, but I, I can't demonstrate that.
What else do you need from us? These are, these are all things that I know the staff is thinking about all the time. You're with Bill, you're him, you know, I know that. What else do you need from us?
Well, I guess in terms of this list of areas, is this all possible? And what's, what's, what's the benefit? Are two of these possible, three, one, I mean, yeah.
I will tell you, before we even get to the, the discussion relative to the State of the Village report, I think one of the areas that we have learned from the current strategic plan is that it was too big. It had too much in it. And that's, that feels good when you create a plan like that. It feels less good when you can't get it all done. And I do think that's a valid point to make as we look at what we're trying to do in these short-term windows, is that we will have the propensity, and I am as guilty of it as anyone, to wanna do it all because it's all important. And I think that's where the prioritization is gonna have to come in. And that, I, I would say not all of this needs to be included in the State of the Village either.
And, and honestly too, Trustee, always prioritizing, you know, what's gonna get one paragraph and what's gonna get one page, right? And, you know, what's gonna get a lot of data behind it and what's gonna get a mention of something that, you know, that the board might be interested in. Some of those types of things, I think, for the State of the Village-wise or wherever it is. You're absolutely right, by the time we get to strategic, you know, goal-setting, we have to be realistic about the expectations of what we can get done.
Is there anything anybody's got on their mind that they'd like us to think about or don't want us to spend time on based on what we did in twenty seventeen or anything? And if not, that's okay, but it's, this, again, this is an opportunity. It's not gonna be your last one, it's an opportunity. We'll try and do some check-ins along the way.
I'm a little mixed on this notion. Is this plan you're working towards priority of things to get done? Or is it principles and guidance in the way that you make decisions? And I think those are two pretty different things.
Well, I think it is establishing that the, the principles that we have in place or re-establishing that the principles that we have in place are the right ones. And that the goals that we build off of those are achievable and measurable. and measurable, to your point about knowing how we're doing and making sure that we're tracking that progress. What the board did in 2014 was establish those strategic priorities. We did not amend those strategic priorities in 2017. We kept them the same. Because generally, they felt right. And I think a big part of when we, the strategic plan itself is making sure that those priority areas, and there are seven of them, which is a lot, are the right ones. Because what you then build off of that is the work that you're going to do to support them, right? So that's where the prioritization comes in. And I would say, you know, as we think about those, those seven items, and it's infrastructure replacement, financial, anybody have these open?
Sustainability.
Sustainable, environmental sustainability,
organizational development.
Work development, community engagement.
Structure.
If I said that one, I think, yeah.
Commercial vitality.
Commercial vitality. And one more. Anyway, there's so many of them that I can't rattle them off quickly. And I think there's, there's a, there's a benefit to that and there's a drawback to that. And I think that's going to be a question that we build out a little bit in terms of the State of the Village report to say, okay, what's missing from here and what's redundant in here perhaps? And how do we, how do we, you know, perhaps narrow it or at least focus it? Because if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. And I think that's, that's a reality that we also have to face. It's that you can't, you can't make everything a high priority because not everything is equal in that.
I always had a beef with environmental sustainability, if you may recall.
I do, I do.
Appropriate title. I would reconsider how you're bringing that.
I generally like the term of sustainability more because it's not about one thing. It's a generalized statement that actually ties into most everything we do. But I would agree with you. Actually, I take it back. We did add that one in 2017. That was not in the 2014 plan. Okay, well, I think we've got some good information from you. This was very, oh, oh, sorry Dudley, I didn't see it.
Thing I wanted to, to add. Bill, I shared with you what I call usings on possible trends that may impact the village. And I'd like to share that with the board, if that's okay with you.
Please, yeah.
Okay, I can send you, well, you have a hard copy.
I have it, I can, I can share it with the board in the final report.
You know, I have a.
And you're also sharing that with the plan commission, correct?
I haven't shared it with anybody other than you at this point, but I certainly can.
I thought we were, I, I, I'm sorry, I thought you would mention you might share it.
Yeah, I would like, I certainly can.
Okay.
You know, as a part-time academic, I have time to reflect on things from time to time. And what I was, what I did is I did a quick survey of some of the literature that the American Planning Association has put together on social economic trends that might impact the village. And I had like thirty things that could, that could happen. Some are a lot more important than, than others, but it, it really got me thinking about the future where I'm going to spend the rest of my life. And so I think, you know, this may get us, you know, being able to talk about this a little bit more. The second thing is I have, in my, my career, I've been involved with a group called A A R P, American Association for Retired People, and also a group called C N U, the Congress for the New Urbanism. And they have been working together on kind of a background piece as what can an established community do to be a little bit better? And maybe in our next meeting, we can, they produced a report on that. And we can share that with the board at our next, next meeting or whenever. We've got copies enough, I think, for all the members of the board and the plan commission. I've got twenty copies of the pamphlet, or it's a little booklet. I thought that would be kind of interesting. And then on the social side of things, what's, what's coming to the fore in the, in the planning community is really interesting, is a real focus on strengthening our social infrastructure by cultivating a culture of connection. And that is, you know, how do we, as individuals, connect to, to the, to the community? And I was just thinking to my own neighborhood. There are some people, you know, I've lived in my neighborhood, oh, well over twenty years. I have a couple of people within a house or two, and I don't even know who they are. And that's not a culture of connection and community. And, you know, part of it's my fault and part of it is just our structure. You know, people work out of the community, they do a lot of things outside. You know, my own, my own case, you know, I, for a number of years, I was working twenty miles north and my wife was working twenty miles south. And, you know, everything was focused on, on the house. But, you know, now that we're retired, you know, we're like hyper-interested in, in the community and, and just trying to think about, you know, how do we, how do we do that? And that's, that's pretty touchy-feely stuff. But, you know, there's some physical kinds of things we can, we can do to, to do that. Events for the community is, is one option. I think writer's theater helps us in a lot of ways. The upgrading of the parks, you know, helps us connect as well. So I just wanted to bring that all to the, to the table for us to start thinking about this. Yeah, the other thing I want to say about the strategic plan is the whole idea of the here and now and focusing on what is it we can, we can do and what are our immediate priorities? And say that how important that is, and then to measure those, how important that is for, for what we do. So I'll get off my academic soapbox here and look forward to sharing that information with you.
I'll have to just add, Trustee, I think what you just mentioned also was underscored by what Trustee Ray mentioned with respect to the downtown and the vibrancy and the things that bring people together. And what, how can we cultivate that? And what can the village do to accommodate it? And, you know, it's interesting because when we think back, when I think back, one of the biggest changes in the downtown really didn't have a lot to do with something that the village created. We didn't build something, we didn't change the infrastructure. But when Hometown Coffee opened and became what essentially is the hub of our downtown and very much the center of it from the standpoint of how the intersections work, those are the kinds of things that we do have an influence on in terms of creating a business-friendly environment and creating a space where people can think outside of the box and, and entrepreneurialism is, is encouraged. And I think those things, it ties very nicely, community engagement ties very nicely in with economic development. And, and, and putting those two together, I do think that's an area that we want to try to explore a little bit in State of Village Report just to see, you know, I, we have not gone through the survey at length. But, you know, one, one note that I will say is, as I've gone through it, one thing that jumped out at me is we've asked the same question three times now, which is how important is a, or, is there a good blend of retailers and restaurants in our downtown? And in 2015, twenty-five percent of the community said we were either really good or good at that, which is a pretty low number for, for us. Twenty-twenty-three, forty-five percent said that we were very, very good or good at that. So we're making progress in those areas, but what else can we do? And again, what else can we do to cultivate connections between our residents? Because that also leads to kind of trying to solve some of those problems that you mentioned, but perhaps housing questions and all sorts of, it all kind of ties back together.
Yeah.
And that's, I think that's an important part of what the village can do, so.
Anybody have anything else?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you for getting us pointed in the right direction. Is there any other business for this meeting? And if not, is there a motion to adjourn?
What's new adjourn?
We spoke, I think, all in favor.
Yes.
Our election carries for adjourn.